...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation. Legislative update. Legislators want to update us?
We've got legislators.
Please welcome, um, you can come up to the podium and...
(inaudible)
Whatever works for you, it really is up to you guys if you want to do it one by one and individually you choose the order.
Just make sure the little green button is on the speaker and speak into the microphones so people at home can hear you.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So, I want to thank Mayor Vigent and School Committee Chair Michelle Boden-Hedinger for inviting us for a legislative update. Um, and I think we've come a couple of years back. Happy to answer any questions the school committee has. As you probably know, both the House and Senate have passed their budgets. So now there's a conference committee to decide what will be the final number for each area, including each line item for education. And I generally feel since revenues are high that whether the number was higher on the House or the Senate, that that will be the higher number, will be the final number in the different areas of, you know, education. I did just hand out a cherry sheet that breaks down both what the Governor, the House and the Senate proposed on everything from Chapter 70 to, excuse me, Charter reimbursement to unrestricted general aid. So, um, I, as I said before, I do think at the end of the day, the higher number will be the final number, but that's being worked out by the conference committee. And then I just want to mention to the school committee that, um, I've gotten some communication with some of the school committee members about the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. And so the Senate has passed those recommendations. So that's something that I've heard from some of the school committee members, including, I think, you, Michelle, about, and that's around adjusting the state aid for health insurance costs for all school districts, ELL population, special education, and then Chapter 70. So that's something that, a commission that happened a few years ago. And so these are recommendations that if it became law would be implemented over the next, I think, five years. So, um, so that, I just wanted to highlight that and that is my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Senator? Questions? Thank you very much, Senator.
I actually have a question. So how, who decide, like, who's on the conference committee? How are those, are they specific people or do people volunteer?
Yes, so, so the Senate President and the Speaker of the House appoint, appoint three, three members. So on the Senate side, it's Senator Spoca, Senator Lovely, Joan Lovely, and I think Vinnie Dimasito. Um, I don't know, on the House side, it's...
So on the, on the House side, it's Ways and Means Chairman Jeffrey Sanchez, Vice Chair Steve Kulik, and I think it's, is it Lenny, Lenny Mira or...
I'm not sure who the rank of the...
Um, yeah, the only thing member.
I apologize. But we expect to have that report by the end of this week because technically we are supposed to have a budget in place for July 1st, although there has been talk of a temporary budget that will get us through at least a month. We'll get you those numbers, of course, as soon as we have them and we'll know more by the end of this week.
Very good to see you all this evening. So the Senator had spoken about the findings of the Foundation Budget Review Commission and that, you know, part of that was to, actually, to spend over $1 billion, which we don't have the money to do. So we started by, uh, by addressing the healthcare, healthcare costs and we've been doing that. So the two-year total with the, with the, with the current appropriation is $64 million or 30 percent of the total cost of implementing the healthcare component of the, of the, of that reform. So I just want to mention that, that the House and Senate passed a act to promote and enhance civic engagement. It's in a conference committee right now and this is really to prepare students by learning about the Constitution and the state constitution. You know, hopefully, um, the students will become more engaged in the political process. I think part of it is for them to actually do a, before graduation, do a, do a project. Also, Senate 227 resolving, was a resolve authorizing a study of starting times and schedules for high school and middle school, which, uh, which is actually a redraft of a, of a House bill that I had, had presented at the beginning of the session. And that will create a task force to review the effective school day start times for middle school and high school and, I think we already know, but the legislature has to do it, do it for itself and to move forward. So, I think, oh, to, just to, you know, this is very current. Earlier today, the House Ways and Means, or the Senate, the House Ways and Means passed, voted on a bill, an act relative to early childhood education, which I suspect that the House may vote on tomorrow, as early as tomorrow. And that would be developing a schedule for revising the rate structure for voucher and contracted payments to providers of subsidized early education and care services on behalf of low income and other at-risk children. And establish early childhood mental health consultation grant program to provide consultation services and workforce development for behavioral health needs of children in early education. That's just, uh, hot off the press.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Tennessee?
Um, thank you. You actually brought up in regards to the civic discussion. I'm just curious is, because I think we had contacted a few of you offline about funding. Because obviously if that's going to be an element that's going to be put in, I'd like to make sure that there was funding to support PD as well as, you know, additional time that might be needed within the classroom and things like that. So I just would hope that before, that really moves much further forward, that there's some more discussion.
So I can take that as a segue into my brief remarks that, as you know, there were differences between the House and Senate bill.
Yep.
One requiring mandate and the other not. So they're still being worked out in conference committee as well and then in addition to the discussion that the DUCI had today about the frameworks. So I think those three things are eventually, we're going to all see it come out in the wash. We're monitoring it very closely to make sure. I can speak for the House for certain that we have been very careful about unfuted mandates over the last several years and we've really tried hard not to add any additional burden to the schools despite realizing how important this curriculum is. Which brings me to my next point. So I'm lucky and I think most of you know, the audience might not know, that I consider most of the people at this table my friends and we are having constant dialogue on all of these issues, whether it's regarding my FZ bill that we talked about earlier this year that we had sort of an emergency meeting on.
Yeah.
Or whether it's the bill that we've been discussing for years that Senator Eldridge and I have been working on, on financial literacy. We bear in mind the requirements that are put on educators and districts every day and we're really trying hard to make sure that our kids are getting the best education possible as you are without putting any additional burden on you folks. So those discussions are super important and I think it's really important for the folks at home that are watching to know that those discussions are going on pretty much all of the time. With that, I think it's also important for you all to know that this group in particular, as well as a lot of the other folks from the area geographically, have been fighting for more fully funding the sped circuit breaker and regional school transportation. Those are budget priorities that have been important to you throughout the years and we have heard that and continue to take that fight to Beacon Hill on your behalf. And as the Senator said, with increasing revenues, it's our hope that we can bring more money back to the districts to fund those priorities. And I think we've been doing a good job arguing for that. Another discussion that we've been having within the last week or so is about the so-called grand compromise bill that we reached last week that could negatively impact the city's ability to negotiate with potential employees because cities are exempt from the minimum wage requirements. They're required only to follow the federal, federal minimum wage bills. So we're going to look into whether there is a preemption or whether we can work with you to figure out something that makes it easier for you to hire the best people that are around our kids every day. So I want to thank you for bringing that to my attention and we want to continue to work with you on that. With those things having been said, I want to move to the celebratory part of the evening and I apologize for being the first one to do this to you, Mrs. Grulick.
(laughing)
Because it's still really hard for me to call her Maureen, 20-something years later. I want to congratulate you and thank you for your years of service to this district. I know you've impacted the lives of countless thousands of students, including mine, having been the educator who has given me the line that's perhaps been the most important piece of information I got in my secondary education. Semper ubi, sub ubi. And for those of you at home, Google it and you'll find out and then you'll know it too and it'll always be very important to you.
You have to be able to spell it to Google it.
Well, you should have had Mrs. Grulick for Latin.
(laughing)
So I want to sincerely thank you for not only what you've done for me, but what you've done for everyone at this table, everyone in this room and most of the kids who've come through the Marlboro Public Schools over the last 25 years. And with that, on behalf of the delegation behind me, I want to tell you that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives and the Senate, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives and the Senate offer sincerest congratulations and recognition of Maureen Grulick for your 25 years of service to the students of Marlboro and your retirement from the role of superintendent of the Marlboro Public Schools. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And good luck to the people who get you in Indiana because you're going to whip them into shape real fast. It's signed by myself and Representative Gentile and Senator Eldridge and it was given on the 30th day of June at, or, well, I guess I'm a little ahead of myself here.
(laughing)
Sorry. That was the official date for the retirement, so that's what we put on for it. So, and it's signed by us as well as the Speaker and the Senate President. So thank you so much and congratulations and don't be a stranger.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Before you go, Mr., I actually had a question for Karma, Mr. Gentile. The start times?
Yes.
Are you, are you thinking that the legislature is going to actually pass something telling us that we need to change?
So that's in the future. I mean, that's, that's not what they're doing.
Is that the kind of conversation that's being had?
That's not happening this session.
Okay.
Not this session.
All right. I mean, do...
One of the ones that costs more money, so we're putting it out till later.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Right, that does cost money.
I feel like in some respects, to make the whole world work, it's all or nothing. Like if everybody changes it, that makes things a little bit easier, but...
I know, for example, Wayland moved its start time 20 minutes.
Yeah, some, some districts are doing, are flip-flopping the older ones and the younger ones and, you know, everything.
But to move a whole hour, it's expensive. I mean, we'll have to buy lights because there'll be, there'll be more things being done at, at night, you know, so there are a lot of startup costs involved. Right.
Thank you.
One last question. The grand bill, the super bill last week. My understanding is that will pull the sales tax question off the ballot. Has that been finalized at this point as far as the ballot question going away or is it in process?
As long as the Governor signs it, that is accurate.
So that, that's gone away?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, it'll just be a sales tax holiday every year.
Every year.
And the, the, there is a local option on accepting that or not accepting that for municipalities.
For sales tax?
For the minimum wage portion.
No.
No.
The minimum wage portion does not apply to the cities and towns.
I thought there was a local option whether we accept it or not.
That is contrary to my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not my...
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
MHS update.
I'd like to invite Dan Riley, soon to be principal of Marlboro High School, to present us with a bit of an overview of some of the initiatives for student success at the high school.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I apologize for the confusion in scheduling with this update from last school committee session, but I just want to really start by thanking everyone for the transition that I've had over the last few weeks. The students, the staff, my fellow leaders, school committee, thank you so much. It's really been a good transition. A lot of work going on at the high school, but it's been a health, a healthy transition. I thank you for that. So as we look at the future of MHS, I have an update for you with some of the strategic goals that we have coming into the 2018-19 school year. This slide for me is really the most important in opening up and the work that we have ahead of us truly does take a village. And if you just look at some of the, some of the words that I've used on this slide, you'll see things like capacity, trust, collaboration, relevance, and re-engaging our students to be real stakeholders in the process of their education and innovation. Something that we've been all about here in the Marlboro Public Schools District for many years. Publicly sharing out perhaps for the first time the new MHS schedule and what this is going to look like going into next year. This is an update and an improvement from the Scheduling Committee, which was comprised of leaders and teachers at the high school building. This work happened prior to my transition, but I want to share it with everybody tonight. So this new schedule, which extends us out an additional day, maintains the benefits of the increased time on learning that we gained with last year's scheduling adjustment. But it also makes this a little bit easier to follow from day to day, which was some of the feedback, as I understand it, from the Scheduling Committee that was given by the students and the staff with some points of improvement from last year's schedule. One of the most important parts of this schedule though is highlighted on the next slide, which is how it impacts the health of our learning organization at the high school. And so you'll often hear me say as we move forward that supporting our students means supporting our staff. And we do that by helping them learn together to address the needs of the students that are in front of them each and every day. This new schedule provides us with five days of PLC, five hours of PLC every seven days of school, which is a tremendous amount of opportunity for our staff to learn at the secondary level. I'm not aware of any high schools that have this much PLC time being allotted at the secondary level, so we're very fortunate for that. It's about an 18 percent increase in fact on what we had this past year in PLC time. And you'll see some of the things that we'll be addressing in the slides that are coming up. So I tried to break down the ninth and 10th grade teaming approach separately for this presentation, highlight some of the areas that are going on at each of the grade levels. Beginning with ninth grade in the fall, as you've, as you've heard, we are moving to a thematic learning experience for all students at MHS. And this is the fruits of the seed of our STEM program, which will still exist as a pipeline within the high school. And extending upon that, we are introducing an entrepreneurship opportunity as well as a fine arts opportunity for our students coming into the ninth grade. And this is helping us leverage our small learning communities to really improve student personalization, which again goes back to one of those key cultural goals, which is to build that buy-in amongst our students as real stakeholders in the education process. It's also going to help us improve rigor and relevance through the use of interdisciplinary project-based learning like we've done within our STEM program. One of the pieces of equity that we're rolling out at the high school in the ninth grade is an all honors approach to the curriculum. And I will speak to that specifically in just a second because I have a couple of points of clarification that were kindly provided to me by some parents throughout the community over the course of the last couple of weeks. And so I think it'd be beneficial for me to speak publicly about some of those things so that that information is out there. First and foremost, with respect to electives and how this schedule works. Electives are aligned within the thematic learning experience. Students within any thematic learning experience can fully access our music program. Students can switch thematic experiences from one year to the next, meaning that if a student participates in a STEM experience, let's say freshman year, then they can participate in a fine arts or an entrepreneurship experience sophomore year to get a whole new set of electives if that's what they're set out to do. Students who can't fit certain electives into their experience, like for example, like a music production course, which we've just recently with this new schedule offered at the freshman level for the first time, those electives will still be available at the upper levels where they currently exist for students who want to go through the trajectory and experience a course like music production, for example. With respect to the all honors approach, some questions that came out, and I've had a couple of meetings too with families around this. I'm happy to say that the families that I've met with personally on this have come into the school and asked the question of how are we going to have all the students learning together in the same classroom at different levels? And those conversations have been ended on a very good note. All the families that I've met with have left my office thanking me and telling me how excited they are to have their students come to MHS next year, which is a school that is set out to improve and innovate in every chance we can. We are looking through this approach to raise the bar across the board for all students eventually through grade 10. The reason for that is that all of our students need to experience more rigor for their math and literacy, for their math and literacy courses up through especially the MCAS exam years. This is also a continuation of their middle school experience in which they are in fully heterogeneous classes. The same GPA opportunities afforded to all the students equals the playing field. It raises the rigor of those experiences for students who are formerly in a college preparatory classroom, but it still provides them access to the same standards. With respect to 10th grade teaming, this is a continuation for this year of what's currently happening in grade nine, which is where we have one thematic learning experience and we have two additional teams. Now the teams are comprised this year mainly of our math, ELA, and our history teachers. Going into next year though, thanks to the work of the leadership team at the high school and our scheduling guru, Steve Bishop, we have been able to include our science teachers for a large portion of those sophomore students. So off of the STEM team, they will be four-person teams supporting these 10th graders in a small learning community environment. We're also utilizing our STEM team to balance these numbers so that they are equitable across the 10th grade. So we will have three teams with roughly 80 students per team. The students that are being included in part of that STEM team are not going to be required to complete the STEM requirements that are asked of students who are voluntarily participating in the STEM program, but they will still receive the supports of the small learning community in the personalized experience, which is our overall goal for all students up through their sophomore year. We're also looking at the continuation of our small learning community implementation through the 2019-20 school year. So during this current school year, we will be having additional talks about how that will look for our sophomores full-blown in the school year following this one. And we'll also be discussing the thematic continuation in those discussions as well. Some of the things that have been brought to my attention that I'd like to clear up with respect to the 10th grade teaming piece, and might classify these as kind of like false rumors. Leveled classes will still exist during the sophomore year for the 2018-19 school year. Now, this does not apply to our STEM cohort. It has never applied to our STEM cohort and those teachers have been demonstrating tremendous success for students of all levels for the last seven years in a heterogeneous environment and they requested to maintain that going into next school year. All 22 advanced placement courses are still being offered at MHS. With respect to supporting students, both academically and socially emotionally, we are looking to leverage, again, that PLC time that I referenced on the third slide. That's going to be used to help our teachers support our students on both of those fronts. It'll also help us increase the communication that we have between our teachers and our parents, again, building that culture of trust and that culture of collaboration that I highlighted on the first cultural slide. Teachers will be recommending interventions more regularly for all students. We'll have student contract systems in place and we're supporting this growth with summer professional development for our staff so that they're coming into the school year and they feel ready to do these, these new strategies. We are also migrating towards a physics-first approach at the high school. We have seen over the last seven years with our physics-first approach and the STEM cohort that it provides a much more hands-on curriculum for our ninth graders. It's more accessible to our language learners. It's provided a strong foundation for our advanced placement courses, especially physics. We've had a tremendously high success MCAS rate with physics and statewide, it is the most successful science exam. So we're looking at implementing this across two freshman teams in the 2018-19 school year and then implementing for the remaining freshman team during the 2019-20 school year. That has to do mainly with acquiring the right staff to deliver the curriculum. One of the things that I want to make you aware of as well is that we are still trying to explore a creative alternative for biology during freshman year for those students that truly do want to have a life science experience coming into the high school. So we have a couple innovative solutions that are on the table right now for that and we'll be working with that as we move forward to help maintain some of those biology options at the freshman level. And lastly, just highlighting our literacy focus, one of the biggest themes that we have going at MHS this upcoming school year. One correction to this slide mainly just resulting from the hiring process this past week is that we did hire two reading teachers. Instead of hiring one reading teacher and one intervention specialist, we were able to find two people who had the qualifications, the reading qualifications, who are fully reading teachers. So we'll be hiring both of those candidates to get more experience into the school. We're incorporating a full-year reading program for students that are identified as reading significantly below grade level. And one of the old sayings with respect to high school success is that your math scores will get you into college and your ability to read and write at high levels will keep you there. So we want to make sure that our students have the opportunity to build on their literacy skills while they're at MHS. We also have implemented this past school year some reading software that's being used to support students through our English Language Arts classes. We will continue with utilizing some of that and supporting our teachers with professional development to support the students through the use of that software. This year with respect to professional development, and Mary and I have been working on this plan with the rest of the leadership team, we are looking at themes like close reading strategies across all classrooms, vocabulary and language-based objectives built into lessons. So our focus for professional development will really be in those three main areas with respect to supporting literacy development at MHS next year. Thank you. So would I take questions at this time? Yes?
Thank you very much. Mrs. Hennessy.
How'd you know?
Because you have a student in the high school.
True. And I actually have had a number of parents that have all been reaching out. So I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Riley, for being able to, you know, be here for the presentation, but also take a deep breath with knowing that you, you're only just kind of stepping off. And so it's kind of tough to come in in the middle of the swirl when there's been a lot of communication and conversation going on outside and you're just getting started. So I wish you much success on that, by the way.
Thank you.
So thank you for some of the clarity. I guess just because I want to make sure I'm really clear because there have been a lot of folks that have been asking questions since it was in a bit of limbo and scheduling had to start. For ninth grade, so we're trying to move forward on three-team structure for ninth grade, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And can you help me to make sure that I'm, I'm clear as well as the, you know, community who's, who's asking the questions clear? Students will have a choice around electives, so such as a student that's looking to be a part of the STEM program, they'd have their normal core subjects that have been happening for a while now, but they would have opportunities to consider whether it be like, say, world language, art foundations, a music course, whatever, whatever have you. I mean, how is that kind of coming together, knowing that also we have... I mean, how is that kind of coming together, knowing that also we have some of the requirements that are semester opportunities that need to be fulfilled due to like the, the physical education, well, health wellness courses and such?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So yes, students still have a choice with respect to the language that they've taken, they are taking. This scheduling update has allowed us to actually offer more elective options for our students at the freshman level. Primary example would be those business classes like entrepreneurship and finance and those types of experiences through electives. Traditionally, freshmen have been restricted from being able to get into those classes in large groups, I should say. So by dedicating classes specific to the needs of freshmen, we've been able to help them get into those additional elective experiences. With respect to the fine arts, we've actually leveraged the fine arts department to be a part of every thematic learning experience. And the curriculum, which is very innovative, is being updated to kind of creatively meet the needs of students according to their theme. So for example, in the entrepreneurship experience, it's a media arts course that students are able to not just understand some of the foundations of art that they were getting from art foundations, but also incorporate some of the media software that was being delivered at the upper levels. So this is going to help us provide more of an elective experience, a healthier elective experience for our younger students.
So it sounds like a little bit of change for Program of Studies as well, then, right? I mean, just, just to be clear, because when we were looking at the Program of Studies, we didn't have that element. So this is a new way of looking at art foundations, is kind of branching out to support in different areas? Is that a good way of putting it? Just want to make sure, right?
Absolutely, that could be true. I wasn't fully...
I recognize that. I'm just, that's why I'm kind of looking around the table, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page, because prior to you, you know, coming into this position, and we've had a lot of discussion around the needs of making sure we had semester courses offered. So such as you're talking about, you know, media arts being able to be a, a course offered, I'm guessing that would be offered similarly in a semester, bless you, in a semester fashion that we have with art foundations, that it could be paired up with phys ed being the other area or something like that?
Exactly.
Is that a good way of kind of making sure that we're talking about it in the same way?
Yes, yep. Semesterized experience, absolutely.
Can I, can I, just for my clarification, so does that mean art foundations is no longer a prerequisite to other art courses?
It wasn't last year either.
Yes, that is true.
Okay, so then art foundations could be something that could, or media arts, I guess I should say, or whatever we're going to offer, that is something that could be offered at any grade level then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I just want, I'm trying to peel it back to make sure, because
Oh, no, it's okay, please ask.
There's a lot of misnomer or assumptions, and I want to make sure we're all clear about the availability or options of those courses.
Absolutely.
And how does that kind of come into play? Because we're talking fine arts, where we're talking about, you know, the drawing and that end, how does that kind of play into the year-long courses that have been more concert band or chorus, you know, something, all of those offerings? Can those be paired with any of these themes in ninth grade?
Yes, yes. In fact, from my understanding, we've even come up with some creative solutions from, for some students who are even a little bit more advanced than the music program, students who might be part of the jazz band because of their talent coming into the high school and their ability to also access those types of performing groups.
Okay, thank you. And then as well, where you were having, you communicated about the hope of raising the bar across for everyone, with ninth grade continuing with honors courses, if you will, you know, what we've been calling honors courses across for everyone in ninth grade. How are we going to look at making sure that we are meeting the rigorous needs for the students that are maybe on a higher-end, higher-challenge need versus those that need additional interventions? You spoke about a number of the literacy type of interventions, but then how are we going to make sure that we're also addressing the, the challenge needs for continuing to push those students that need more advancement?
Sure, yeah. Differentiation in the classroom is, is not necessarily a new approach for our staff, but this would absolutely put it right on the front line. And so doing this in a small learning community model, where we have the level of personalization that we're going to have going into the next school year, we also have multiple points of opportunity for student success with the interdisciplinary experiences. So one of the things that we noticed with the STEM program over the last seven years is that our students, regardless of where they were coming into the program from middle school, about 75% of them would have traditionally been on a CP trajectory, let's say. And so the interdisciplinary experiences taught those students a new way of thinking and a new way of applying their academics, and it also raised the level of engagement. And so through doing that, we essentially changed sort of the student mindset around the approach to education, helped them become higher-level students over the course of the two years. And so by supporting the staff to make those connections in classrooms and to start utilizing new strategies that quite frankly are much needed in any, any district, more in a district that has a larger urban population, that needs more support from time to time, those small grouping strategies are going to help all of our classrooms be more successful in, in applying those. So it's, it's really needed on the professional development side as well for our staff, but the main key to success is the support that we provide, and it really is an all-hands-on-deck approach to getting this done the right way for all kids in these classrooms.
And the buy-in from all of the staff to understand the differentiation that we've all talked about for a while, but making sure that we're really pushing the, the level for the challenges all along the trajectory.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. The staff are very excited. We've met a few times so far to talk a little bit about going into next year and to talk about how we're slowly rolling out certain expectations to make room for growth in other area, other areas, like for example, teaching in a differentiated classroom. So while the project-based learning and the student intervention will eventually go hand in hand, we might look at rolling out project-based learning a little bit slower for the new themes in order to focus more heavily on student intervention and classroom professional development opportunities for the staff.
So with that need of potentially taking it slower, I'm assuming you'd also be looking for feedback from some of the, you know, parent-students that are looking to push further and push higher, right, as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm always welcomed feedback. That's been one of the biggest points of improvement for our STEM program the last seven years, I've always found. The parents and the students are the ones that helped us drive some of the key decisions that in my mind made the STEM program more accessible and more equitable. The flushing out of project-based learning grades, for example, is one example of that. But absolutely, I, I felt, I also feel that we can do a much better job engaging parents on a more regular basis as key decision-makers and stakeholders at the high school. So while I know we have the formalized groups like school council, we don't have a parent-teacher association at the high school, we don't host events out in the community to try and engage parents that might not regularly come to the school for events. So those are some of the changes that we're going to be making next year.
Relative towards gathering of data and utilizing the PLC time that you're setting up, is that something where you feel, and you probably already have had some conversations with Mr. Daniels about making sure that transition of information from the eighth grade is really pushing up so that immediately the staff can have the right information to, to delve right away and get moving on any kind of interventions or acceleration?
Absolutely, it's, it's already happened. And it's happened a lot from content to content, too, which is also super helpful when you can focus on the needs of students, not just in general in terms of them moving up as a cohort, but specifically on their academic needs. The middle school, the eighth grade teachers specifically, the middle school have been fantastic about supporting us with that.
So moving ahead, sorry, anyone jump in, feel free, but 10th grade, you're looking at keeping currently for this next year with the one theme that, that would be STEM, which has been there. When you're saying that you're looking to kind of fill out to balance that group, how are you looking to balance out that group? Are there certain people that you've designated? You're trying to look for people that are kind of following down that path anyway and maybe just weren't in STEM previously?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. So STEM provides the traditional biology experience during the sophomore year for students. So it made sense to take students who had had an exploring engineering experience as freshmen and have them become part of the STEM cohort. In addition to that, because of staffing restrictions with AP certification, for example, the STEM history teacher is going to be delivering all of the US AP history coursework. It's two sections. And so students taking AP US History, we're going to be with Ms. Knight because of scheduling requirements anyways, and so we merge them as well with the STEM cohort to be part of that team, but not to have the additional requirements that the students who have voluntarily become part of the STEM team have asked for with interdisciplinary project-based learning.
Right, so they'll be kind of on the team, but not necessarily, they don't, they don't, won't have all of those requirements unless they want to.
Yeah, they can voluntarily, absolutely, if they want to trial the experiences, the teachers have already told me that they're very open to that.
That's great.
Most importantly, though, the students are going to get the personalized support, the, the sort of it-takes-a-village approach that we want for all students in the ninth and 10th grade.
So really a huge advantage based upon the data that we've gotten about the research to support smaller team learning, supportive learning environments?
Absolutely, trying to make the high school a little bit smaller, especially for the first two years for our younger students.
Okay, and clarity also then around the CP honors, AP, if you will, discussion. So at 10th grade, but then also for juniors and seniors, that would still stay in place as opportunities, dependent upon where you see yourself, and I'm, I'm guessing, parents and guidance counselors and staff are also seeing students where they can best meet their success rate currently.
Absolutely, absolutely, and those are the discussions that lay ahead of us. But I've always been a big believer that we have to look at what we're currently doing and ask if it's working. I would say from the data that I've seen, that having a college preparatory trajectory in the ninth and 10th grade does not help our, our MCAS outcomes. There seems to be a correlation with that. So that's why we're kind of presenting this as an opportunity for change, to have a, a better impact on the achievement overall at the high school.
And the reason I'm asking this is because I'm, I'm, would like to encourage more people in the community that were hearing a lot of rumblings and had either questions or concerns, really to make sure that they're coming forward to speak with you or your, you know, administration about ideas, whether it be positive or negative, that they've seen and experienced, so that hopefully that data can be a part of your factoring for how you move forward.
Absolutely, it can only help, the feedback can only help. And like I've said, we've had parents who have come into the conversation very concerned, and, and they've left very satisfied, just knowing the whole rationale, the whole approach, and hearing it directly from me, the incoming principal has also helped as well. So I welcome that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your information and insight, and I appreciate the opportunity to allow others to come forward and proceed with questions, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. My only question is around our capacity for linguistic diversity on each team. If we're going to be having kids across the board in a homogeneous way, and we're going to try to engage families more, I just want to make sure that we are equipped to be able to do that.
Sure. So say more to me about what you mean by linguistic diversity. Do you mean like the inclusion of our ELs in...
I presume the...
Or academic classes?
Yeah, maybe not the ones, because they don't have any language.
Sure.
You know, as kids move into more of an integrated environment, they're going to be spread across all of the teams, I would presume.
That, that has actually already started. That's been put in place at the high school across core academic classes, beginning with our high-level-two ELs based on access scores and, and up through our sixes, obviously. So we've already started that process of more inclusion for students, quite frankly, because academic research shows us that being in an inclusive classroom setting raises achievement for students, especially ELs, when they have the chance to be in those classes.
Right, and I, I understood that. I guess when you were talking about expanding the small learning community concept across the board, and we're going to be working as, you know, teams and getting to know the kids better and hopefully reaching out and getting more family engagement, as we've seen has happened with the STEM cohorts.
Yep, absolutely.
We have to be able to communicate with those parents.
Yeah, we actually have been very fortunate, too, because of the investment that the district has made in translation services at all the levels. And yes, we do have two translators. We have one Spanish translator and one Portuguese translator on staff full-time at the high school, and they have helped tremendously with verbal and written communication to families throughout the school year. So they already have their feet on the ground, they've already been supporting teachers, but yes, absolutely, we'll continue to leverage that so that these teams can more effectively communicate with home.
Two more coming, right?
More to come on that. We're working with Xerox on an exciting new product, and I hope to roll it out next fall, that will give every single person in the district an ability to translate any of our documents instantaneously into the languages we need. So more to come.
There you go, all right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for the information. You answered a lot of the questions I had, and thank you for the, asking your questions, because there were a lot of the questions that I had.
See, see.
So thank you.
He has someone at the high school, too.
My only question was, I know there was a lot of discussion last year about the schedule and the new schedule last year. How is this schedule different than what was happening?
Sure, yep, that's a great question. So this year's schedule rotated on six days, and there was one day where we dropped two periods in order to make it fit within six and then also offer our Panther block on one of those days. What's, what's interesting about the schedule is it's almost an exact replication of the middle school schedule. There's a couple of small differences in the rotation in order to preserve the integrity of our students who travel to Quinn-Sigman Community College throughout the week for college classes. But other than that, it's, it's pretty much the same as the middle school schedule, but it's spread out over seven days rather than being within six. What that allows us to do, because we run a seven-period schedule, is only drop one period each day, rather than that one day where we drop two. And in doing so, we also increase the teacher's PLC time by about 18% during the rotation.
That makes sense. And is it still the morning rotates and the afternoon rotates?
Yes, yes, with one floating period of D, which is, again, that's another improvement. I didn't say this specifically, but for the students who travel to the campus of Quinn-Sigman Community College to take courses, what that allows us to do is schedule them during A, B, and C, and never have a disruption to the flow of those classes while they're then traveling to Quinn-Sig at 10:30-ish in order to take their classes from 11 to 2 there. So it's, it's a, it's a big upgrade for us in that area as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Senator.
Sorry, follow-up. Homeroom, that obviously went away this last year. Are you keeping it, that that's not happening, or is that a conversation piece, or, I'm just curious, because it's not shown on there, and so I'm assuming it's, we're staying as-is, that you go to your first class and that's it to begin?
Everything is a conversation piece for me right now. I haven't been immersed in the decision-making process around whether we should or shouldn't have homeroom. I'm very interested in getting involved in the discussions, but from the way I understand it, they were running some form of an announcement opportunity, but not through a homeroom this, this, this school year. So it's certainly be something that we will revisit. Again, the, the use of that homeroom time tied back into the personalization plan for the high school. So one of the, one of the questions that we as a staff would have to ask ourselves is, is having the homeroom make it an overall better student experience? Or is, is it getting in the way of academic time, I think was one of the reasons maybe why they had tried to shift it? So I'm, I'm really interested in getting involved in those conversations, but I don't know enough about it yet to, to say one way or the other.
No, and thank you. I just, I appreciate that it's a conversation piece, because I think when we've talked about a lot of the SEI and, and, you know, needing to create those relationships, and often when, when we would see kids getting ready to graduate, sometimes the, the staff member that they wanted to acknowledge before they graduated was often maybe the person that was their homeroom person, because there was a relationship that was able to be created there. So I'm not saying I know enough to say, you know, it should be done this way. I just want to ask the, the question for the conversation to be had, so thank you.
Great question.
To piggyback on that a little bit, I think one of my biggest concerns when the homeroom went away was...
homeroom went away was that, that homeroom teacher was, for some, their constant through the four years, or five years, if they were there for five years. But with teaming, I think the, actually, now the opportunity of at least four or five people who will be seeing that student every day for the 180 days, which brings back what we thought we were losing in that relationship building, so.
Absolutely. And there's also a proximity piece, too.
As you said, making it smaller.
Absolutely. And there's also a proximity adjustment, too, that we're making, where these team teachers in the areas of math, English, and history are going to be teaching in the same area of the building. And that will continue into sophomore year. So, a student who is part of, let's say, the fine arts experience over two years, they will have their freshman teachers even within proximity directly across the hallway from where their current sophomore teachers will be. And it's, again, it's about building a tighter community, so that students have staff that they feel comfortable with, that they can go to, that are in close proximity as well, and that know them well.
Other questions?
Great, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Committee discussions, communications, superintendent's report. Mr. Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Principal Riley. Sounds really good.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy.
So, we're pleased to announce the following MEA members who have attained both early professional status and professional status in the Marlboro Public Schools. I don't think we celebrate our staff enough, our wonderful staff. Early professional status, you'll recall, is the awarding of status before the requisite three years as per contract. And these are folks typically in their second year. We want to retain our wonderful teachers. Patty Brown and I had the pleasure of awarding certificates in the past couple of weeks to these folks. You can read their roles, but I do want to acknowledge their names. Nancy Marie Sheryl Polkowski, Riley Fallon, Carrie Ann Yatkins, Mariah Dolan, Matt Peliquin, Jerry Padilla, Matt Senko, Amy Wayman, Deana Martinelli, Sarah Kaleri, Bree Leggio, April Knott, and Michelle Lamachia. So, please join me in extending, you know, appreciation to them and congratulations. And then, those who have attained professional status in the district at the end of this year are as follows. Andrew Thane, Beth Bond, Cara DeHaaland, Tom Kaya, Kristen Chevalier, Steve Bredeberg, Sheldon Bischoff, Doug Tocio, Jen Vaca, Holly Long, Stasha Beamer, Megan Miller, Laura Verajian. I know I didn't say that right. Dr. Scazza, did I?
Verhayan.
Verhayan, sorry. Thank you. Allison Gonca, Lindsay Soboleski, Carrie Arisco, Michaela Harrison, Rebecca Groton, Catherine Cormier, and Becky Shire. Congratulations to all of those as well, for attaining the rank of professional status in MPS. I can't say enough how much of a pleasure it has been to work with Patty Brown as our Director of HR over the past through two years. She's brought a much-needed professionalism to this office. She has hired capable office staff. She's completed audits of certifications and fingerprinting, and she's occupied a valuable seat in the Superintendent Council. She has also put a new face on recruiting and hiring, and I think our site managers can attest to that. She's trained the hiring manager on the use of our online portal, recruit and hire. She brought us to Davis Company for some training that I think unearthed some practices that we had that weren't quite working for us. And included in this packet, I wanted you to see the hiring procedures that she came up with, and then partnered with Brian Daniels, to roll these out with the leadership team. And I think it's very much appreciated. I wanted to make sure that we appreciated the professionalism and honored her this evening. Last year, you will remember that Sharon Buckley presented us with a snapshot, a data sheet for the class of 2017. You all enjoyed it, so we asked her to present it again. I included it in the packet. If you'll take a look at it, there's one interesting point. First of all, last year's class had 223, this year's 283. So, I think we all noticed it was a little more, shall we say, crowded at graduation this year, and that's why. Interesting statistic. I was surprised by this. I thought it would have been more. 146 of the seniors who graduated attended MPS schools for 12 years, or from the grades one through 12, which is just a little more than half. I would have thought it was more than that. So, I think, in many ways, and I did ask Linda Wantoop several times to go back and check that, I, I didn't believe it, but it is true. I think it points up to you all, and to me, was surprising the transient nature of our high school. Curious as to what that would have been 10, 15, 20 years ago. Interesting statistic. A couple of other things I wanted to talk about. City scholarships were awarded at the city council meeting just this past Monday, the 18th, Mr. Mayor. This is a, just a call to all out there who have rising seniors next year and in subsequent years. Let's not leave money on the table. Please, please have your children apply, your seniors apply for these. Five were given. Three of them luckily were Marlboro High School students. Haley Braga, Julia Lambert, Sarah Zagzog, and two others who are not MPS. But we're very proud of them and thank the city for that opportunity.
And, and for those that don't have seniors, please consider donating $5 through your water bill or real estate bill, so we can continue the process.
There you go. Middle school sign, you have probably seen it progressing at the corner. It is, the DPW and Andy White, we need to thank them tremendously for the work they've done in bringing this to fruition. Whitcombe PTO contributed funds, and Western Digital, formerly known as SanDisk. So, there will be a dedication soon. I am not sure when that will be, but I think it will be next week, and I'm sure that will be a lovely event, and those particular groups will be invited. But again, thank you to Andy White and the DPW for their help in this project. It really looks beautiful. One other point of interest, tomorrow morning, bright and early, we'll have a kickoff at the Whitcombe School in the, used to be called the Fish Bowl, now it's called the Whitcombe Commons. We will have about 125 middle school teachers, 80 of them from Marlboro. Massachusetts has declared October, is it 14th, Mrs. Murphy, STEM Week in Massachusetts. And our middle school has jumped in during this week. It is going to be all STEM-based activities for all of the classes, five, six, seven, and eight. And we have some 80 teachers coming to this training, which will be kicked off tomorrow. They will receive a stipend at no cost to us, but from a foundation. We have Lieutenant Governor will be coming, Karen Polito, to welcome us, and it is very fitting, because the Baker-Polito administration has certainly been very supportive of our efforts in STEM education, as well as our early college initiatives. So, many of us will be there bright and early tomorrow morning. I did want to offer my congratulations and best wishes to Mike Bergeron, as he assumes the role of Superintendent of Schools in Marlboro. Under his, yes, five days. Under his leadership, I am confident that MPS will make the needed steps to ensure the academic success of all of our students. I also want to thank the members of the school committee. You have been incredibly supportive, relentless maybe at times, in your support, but that's a good thing, of, of our students and our families in the district, and of me, and I appreciate that. And special thanks to Mayor Vigen, as, as much as it pains me to say this, but special thanks to you, because you, you always.
Is that what it said in the report?
You always give me the wazoo. No, I can editorialize. You've really helped, I believe you've partnered well in, in restoring the alliance and the partnership between the city and schools, and I think it's, it's shown a lot this year. So, thank you so much. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Senator Seay.
More of two compliments. I really appreciated the hiring procedures being, you know, number one, put together and then shared with us, because it's really important to make sure everybody's on the same page about how to hire correctly. And the do's and don'ts do help, because it gives a little bit more perspective about what you, what you can and can't do. And then, I did really want to say thank you again for the information about the, the graduates. And I was kind of, kind of shocked to see the numbers that have not necessarily gone the whole way through the Marlboro Public School system. And I think it, it does really kind of showcase for our community how important it is to make sure that we are valuing teachers to teach to all. It's a, it's a tough task, and, and you need to make sure that you can reach all of the students where they are. Really speaks even more to some of the work we've been doing with MTSS, making sure that the interventions are, are in place. And so, when there's repeated PD around differentiated instruction, and everybody feels like they've heard it for the umpteenth millionth time, it's needed. It's, it's obvious that it's really needed, and each year, you need to be learning a little bit, something more about how you can get to that kid. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Matthews.
Thank you on that, on the data of the graduation thing. One of the things that I think would be interesting, too, and Mike, if you want, if you could request this maybe for the fall, and we'll look back, is just the comparison of the year over the year. And I also think on the data of the kids who, the 12-year or 13-year, I think there, what could be tracked also, and would be an interesting thing to see, is how many left and returned? So, because there is a big cohort in this group that went to AMSA and returned from AMSA. So, you might see them exiting at fifth or sixth grade and returning in ninth grade. So, there's a gap in there, because I know, you know, personally, there was a group.
We know, yes.
So, that'd be an interesting look back also. And if it's trending, if it's, if it's more for us to be able to, as we said, look at different connections or lack of connections. But thank you for that.
Mr. Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start off by just talking about all the capital projects that are going to be going on. There's quite a long list. I'll try to go through as quick as I can. First up is the Little Theater at MHS. We are doing a complete replacement of the lights, the sounds, the projector. We are really trying to overhaul that area. We think it could be a fantastic area for the high school, and we just want to put a little bit of investment in it. We can't do as much as we did in the Whitcombe Auditorium, but we certainly can put some money into it to get the operational pieces working without having kids hang in the back room and flip light switch. That's, that's not what we want to do. So, that project will be happening this summer. We're encumbering it right now. At Kane Elementary, we're going to be upgrading most, if not all, of the lighting to LED, which is a project that the city is working on through our energy rebates and, and purchasing. That'll be a huge upgrade for us. LED lights last a lot longer, they need to be replaced less, generally softer than, than some of the other lights that we've been using in the past. And just the longevity of the lights make it a lot better for maintenance. The MHS TV studio is a complete renovation. We are doing everything. So, we are putting a new pipe in place on the top of the ceiling. We will be replacing the curtain. We are replacing all the lighting, where again, we're doing this through an energy purchase, because all the lighting we're getting is a much more efficient and better system than what we currently have now. I, I did joke with Keith that we're going to have a better studio in WHDH now, so we have to start producing some great content. But I think they're very excited to have a state-of-the-art studio at the high school and see what they can do with it. Although this is pretty much finished, I did want to mention that over the past year, year and a half, Andy White and his crew have been working hard to finish the Whitcombe Commons, which used to be the Fish Bowl, which used to be the library. But now that is completely renovated, including new HVAC. We've put technology and equipment in it, so we can use it as a PD area. I'm looking forward to using it this summer. Probably use it for the administrative retreat, if not other items, and leadership team meetings next year. So, we, we very much are appreciative of having that new space in the district that we can do professional development activities. Cafeteria floor, it needs to be redone in some places. We did do this a couple of years ago, and there was some dissatisfaction with the work that was done by the contractor. So, after summer school, we will be replacing some of the flooring in places, not the entire one, just to, you know, keep up with it and try to hold the contractor who originally did it accountable for the work. So, that'll be happening probably the second or third week of August. The Whitcombe phones are scheduled for an August replacement. That system has given us fits over the past couple of years. It's gone down a couple of times, and I know you guys have seen the emails, because we sent an email saying the phones are down. So, we're going to an IP-based system. So, there was some pre-work that we had to do to make sure that we could have the phones in the server closets on the generator, so in case there was a power outage, that we could still get the phones and have them working. At the Whitcombe main office, there's a reconfiguration, so they can use the sliding windows that are already in place. So, they'll be reconfiguring the office to be a little bit more expedient when bringing parents in and out of the Whitcombe School, so that way, they can walk right up to the windows, and we'll have someone stationed there who can assist them, instead of having to come in, wait, and then, you know, move around the main office where the principal's offices and all those ones are. That can be a very busy place. At DEC and ECC, as you see, we're doing repair of the concrete. They should actually be finished this week, but that's why it was roped off earlier while we were working in negotiations. At Hildreth, we continue to install our STEM equipment that we've been so fortunate to get through several grants. Dan is watching this very closely. I know, we were just talking to Andy White about this yesterday and today, talking about the need to get it installed in a fashion, so we can start using it. There's some pieces that are a lot more expedient than others that we need installed, so we can get working on it right away. But it's all good news stuff. We just have to figure out exactly how to run some electricity for these larger-scale pieces of equipment. At MHS, we have an upgrade of the music and art rooms. We're going, we're upgrading our Apple environment that are, is already there. A lot of the computers were older, they weren't necessarily up to date, they had trouble running the software that we wanted to run. So, we've made a major investment to upgrade all of the technology and install the new app and environment, also to upgrade the music sound booths and those entire rooms. So, there are, there is some switching going on, on the first floor, right near the principal's office. There'll be some movement of some of the art and music rooms to better use the spaces. Security cameras, all I can say is we are continuing our work, and we are very happy with the continuation of our work. For the MHS kitchen, there's a kitchen on the second floor that we're working to upgrade with ADA, accessible appliances and shelving, and all those units, so it can be used in conjunction with our special education program. We're still trying to schedule that work. We hope it can happen this summer. We think it can, but we're trying to schedule that. And at the Richard School, we're trying to continue the work of our vestibule construction. I've seen the layouts from the architect, how it will be laid out, and Andy White is trying to schedule that work. So, my next item on the cafeteria balances, I have to apologize, because I jumped the gun, and I sent a report that was, didn't include the last day's deposits. So, if you look at my, my report, I said that we finished the year with a, with a $3,028 deficit. We actually didn't. I sent it a day early by mistake. Our deficit was $2,785, which is a lot closer to where we were last year. So, we did try, change our policy this year. If you remember, we, we made some tweaks to it. I would say there wasn't a big difference between the two years, and I think, I can't speak for the elementary principals, but I think that they were pleased with having a little bit more leeway on being able to decide when, if, and where a child should receive a different lunch. So, I think that has been helpful, with it not being a huge impact on the fees as far as what we had to pay out. I hope that next year, we can continue with that same policy and keep working with it. The legislatures didn't bring it up, but something that has been discussed in legislation was they were, there was a bill being proposed that would not allow us to offer alternate lunches. So, I just want to put that out there. If that happened, you could see these balances go to a different place. So, we would have to be aware of that. So, when that legislation is coming up, there is a real impact on this, because the National School Lunch Program doesn't care, frankly. School Lunch Program doesn't care, frankly, because what they say is you cannot roll over deficit balances year to year, period. They don't, they don't make any exceptions for that. So when that legislation is upcoming and going through, I certainly will comment on it and let them know that there is a reality that we have to meet in school districts. And the other thing is that any child who needs reduced meal, free meal, we have several ways to apply. They can contact principals, they can contact the business office. So what we're talking about is families who pay full freight. That's where the balances come from. So we have to keep that in mind as we're, we're looking at these policies moving forward. I'd be remiss if I didn't extend my appreciation to Maureen. It's been fantastic. I don't think I know anybody who got a six-month apprenticeship. But I appreciate it. And just to say, we know you go to Indiana, but you're a Panther.
Thank you, Mike.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the committee for obviously allowing this amazing apprenticeship over the past five months.
Thanks. Questions? Ms. Hennessy.
So with the MHS TV studio upgrades that you were mentioning, I would be remiss if I didn't say, I would love it if there was a way of encouraging more opportunity with that group to do more kind of reporting work because there are other school districts right next door, in fact, where often they are at all kinds of sporting events, all kinds of productions going on, doing the taping all the time so that, you know, it's up on a webcast, it's, you know, available. And since we've had a lot more opportunity of putting things up onto YouTube, onto the different channels and all of that, it would be great if there was a way of somehow using this. Great experience for them, you know, so.
We want to upgrade the facility so that way we can get it ready. And I look at it as we're teeing up the ball and I'm going to let Mr. Riley hit it right off the tee right there and make it happen. But it's, you know, when we have the facilities, it makes it a heck of a lot easier. We've bought the equipment. We have upgraded, in, in the high school, I'd say in the past three years, we've upgraded over $300,000 worth of equipment in terms of the music, the art spaces, then now the TV studio. So when you look at that, we're really making great strides in, in using that tuition money we've received from students coming in internationally. And I think to a great extent, we haven't created any operational deficits. We've used the money to greatly increase our ability to, to expand our offerings. So I'm excited to see what they can do.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I think it's great. And the other thing was, because of course Michelle looked right over at me, I'm, I'm pleased to continue here that we're proceeding on the security cameras. And that is something, I like continuing to hear about that because we've discussed that, you know, always a good thing to do. So thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Ryan.
I just had a question about, oh, just a reminder to keep pushing people to do the online payment for lunch payments. I don't know how much of that really reflects why there's a negative balance, the deficit, but, you know, beginning of the school year is always the best time, I think, to promote that with all school levels because it even alerts you when your child's balance is low. It's like the greatest thing ever. I love it. Thank you. But I just don't know if everybody's aware of it, like, you know, as we have new people moving into the district, like, just continuing to promote that. My other question was in regards to the LED lighting. Do any of our other schools have that upgrade yet or will that be happening in the future?
We've been doing it at all the schools. I know last year we were doing it at Wickham. Wickham is so many hundreds of thousands of square feet. We haven't done the whole school, but they were doing pieces of it. Generally, what we do is we partner with the energy company for projects that are usually around the 80 to $100,000 range with significant rebates, usually in the range of $30,000 to $40,000. So we end up getting about $150,000 worth of equipment installed for usually about $80,000 to $90,000 at a time. And we've been chunking the work so that way we can continue on it. And what, I mean, the partnership with, you know, Commissioner Galoney and all of them has been trying to create the long-term savings maintenance-wise so we don't have to constantly be doing the same thing over and over. Some of our schools don't have LED lighting and it's, it's something that when we look at the project, we've looked at the whole scope and how much money we have at that time. Because Commissioner only has so much money to spend each year for energy upgrades, so he has to kind of budget out where he thinks the biggest bang for the buck is going to be. But we appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I thought the greatest thing ever was free trash pickup.
Can we have recycling every week?
No one out there has free trash pickup. Minutes, June 12th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. Approval of the overnight trip for football team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had to have a special meeting last summer to approve this and the very capable Patty Sibilio made sure that it was on the calendar to obviate that need. The Panthers are once again asking for your approval, the football team that is, to attend the overnight at Eagle Hill School Friday, August 24th. Spoke with Mr. Rzinski the other day about a myriad of topics and there are six adults that will be staying with the team, just to let you know. They'll be highly supervised. This is the fourth year they've stayed overnight. So seeking your approval with the backup documentation provided in the packet.
Contain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Approval of the MOA for the Marlboro Para Educators.
Thank, we have reached an agreement with the Para Educators unit for a three-year contract and we just want to extend our appreciation to their membership for coming to the table and negotiating a contract with us.
And we voted in executive session and we want to vote again in public session? Okay. So, motion to approve the agreement between the Para Educators and Marlboro School Committee for 2018 to 2021.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two transfers tonight. The first is transferring available funds from our administrative line through savings and/or turnover to cover our substitute lines for the remainder of the year. We are kind of closing up the books now and just closing out any of our deficits. So in the first line, we had savings from the director line due to a turnover of a position. The director of media line is consistent savings due to the contract with the employee because that person is retired. And then at the assistant principal for Wickham, again, we had turnover in the position that gave us some savings, using those savings to just offset some negative balances in our substitute lines this year, which is, in the past years, we had a lot of money left over in the subs. This year, we didn't have as much. We went to deficit in a couple of them. And part of that is having more available subs for the schools covering some of our absences, which is a good thing. The second transfer is just to use some funds from positions that we either were not having filled or had long-term leaves during the year, such as the team chair, the occupational therapist, just to cover our tutor line. Our tutor line, we cannot predict this year to year. And the reason is, is that the reason we have a tutoring line is to tutor children who might be homebound or hospitalized. So we don't know, we can't really predict what those expenses are going to be, but we use our savings from other lines throughout the year to be able to offset it. We usually budget around $40,000 for tutoring. And then each year, I mean, every year I've been here, we've over expended that amount, but we've always been able to use savings from other lines to be able to cover that. So it is unpredictable at times because we don't know who's going to need those services throughout the year. So those are the two transfers. We are finishing up our financial year. We're just, we're unencumbering all of our payrolls, getting ready for summer. All the capital projects that I just mentioned, we're encumbering all of those and moving forward. So we look forward to another good close to the year. I don't anticipate at this time that we will have any money left over. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I'll be sending you a dime this year. But again, we remain pretty healthy. We have a good store and circuit breaker and I feel pretty confident that moving into next year, we've already prepaid some tuitions and done some things to help ourselves for next year. So we're looking again for another strong budget year next year.
Thank you. Questions?
Move to approve the transfers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Policies.
Thank you very much. So tonight, in the packet and as well, then there were some addendums that were sent to you all separately relative to policies around field trips, excursions, as well as then restraint. Field trips, excursions, you should have received a field trip consent form, an application form, the field trip policy itself, as well as an extended policy. Due to those two at the end needing to be sent separately, if for some reason you are concerned that you may not have the right version, please reach out and let me know. Unfortunately, I have to say, I was away with a medical issue, trying to deal with that on a family front and did not have the ability of getting the corrected information to Patty Sibilio on time, so that's why it was not in the original packet. But I just want to make sure everybody has gotten it. So if you have questions, you can get back in touch with me about that. Relative to the restraint policy, there were three portions that were originally sent out to you. I will say that we had a bit of a miscommunication between myself, some of the administration, as well as dealing with Jody O'Brien because there's been some changes around restraint. So in your packet, there was a waiver form that per the state needs is no longer needed. And we unfortunately did not understand that. So you can get rid of that waiver, which was indicated in an email that came out to you all, but I do want to make sure that that's publicly known. There was an initial policy, the 8.300 in your packet, and that actually is no longer correct. There was a new version that was sent out to you. I'm not sure whether it even, whether it went out last night or today.
Today.
Today, okay. So there is a new version. And again, I would be more than happy for clarification to send things out to you again. I apologize for some of the back and forth. Unfortunately, we got our wires crossed on this one. So any questions around it, we will be more than happy to answer. But you do have a version. It is only going to be one policy now alone. There are no additional areas that are needed. And we just wanted to get that clarification per the state requirements, okay? And so I just have it as a first read and we will discuss them more fully at our meeting in August, unless you have questions ahead of time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. District Improvement Plan.
Or School Improvement, whichever. We'll take School first.
What do you want to talk about?
We'll take School first, thank you. Each year, school site managers submit to the superintendent for approval their SIPs. We've transitioned the timeline so that they align with the budget. So each year you will be seeing these in June. So we are asking that you have reviewed the documents and we realize that there are, there's a lot of information contained in these documents. And we're asking, you know, to give you, or I guess suggesting that you have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions if you're prepared for that. We have the site managers here this evening. Mr. Daniels, I believe, is on a honeymoon this week and is not with us, but we have all of our other site managers and we appreciate their efforts in putting together these documents. Again, lots of information. We tried to work on a consistent format, something that hadn't been done in previous years. And Mrs. Murphy was the, and I, I guess, were the go-tos in sending back for revisions and we thank you for accepting that feedback.
It's a pleasure. Any questions? Or we can table to their review or whichever you'd like to do.
I just have one question that I think stood out to a couple of us. On the richer one, there was no student demographics on the, on there. Can you forward those to us? I don't know why it was missing on that one.
While, while we're on the richer one, there was, we have some extra data for you. Some of the grade three and four were combined in terms of MCAS data, so we'll make sure. Dr. Skazzer provides it to us and we'll send it to you in the morning, those two pieces. Thank you.
Any, Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. As I kind of mentioned earlier tonight, my hope would be that, just because it's dense, there's a lot of really great detailed information here, this is a lot to try and take in in, you know, sorry, a shorter period of time, knowing that this is not our full-time job, we're just playing on TV. And I, I needed more time to be able to really review this, to really give it enough thought. My hope would be that we might be able to have more discussion around some of this in August. You know, not, not saying that there's anything wrong standing out, it just was a lot of details and I, I just didn't feel like I had enough time to really make sure I gave it enough due diligence for all the time that was definitely put forth and making sure that it was aligned to the, the goals of the overall district, which I'm sure it does, but, you know, love if we could review it again.
Plan on scheduling something through the superintendent as the year goes on. If we're going to talk about each of them, we can do them separate nights or whatever, whatever works.
It would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank all the administrators for all the work that you put in. I mean, it's amazing, these documents. And I did read all of them and then started rereading them all and only got through the elementary levels. I'm glad we're going to be able to sit with them some more, but it's obvious you all put a lot of, a lot of work into them, so appreciate it.
Thank you. District Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the school improvement plans are derived from the District Improvement Plan. And the District Improvement Plan was submitted for your approval not too long ago. It's a three-year plan, 2017 to 2020. So we have cycled through year one of this three-year plan and the leadership team began in March or so to review year one goals. And the document that you have in front of you again is copious. There is nothing in the year two and three because we haven't cycled through those yet, but we wanted you to see the complete document. Many of you actually sat on the committees, on the standard committees for the beginning of this work. So what we decided to do was add, the penultimate column is called Assessment of Progress slash Evidence. And in our leadership team meetings, we discussed some of those pieces of evidence that we could put forth. And the final column is called Status. And Mary Murphy and I went through an exercise just last week determining in-progress, completed or no action for all of these action steps for year one only. And the data looks like this. There are four no action, 29 in progress, and 61 completed for year one. And you might ask, what are the no actions? That would be my first question, so I'll anticipate it perhaps, Mrs. Hennessy. The redoing of the mission and, and the expectations for the Marlboro Public Schools has not formally begun yet. At the high school, we have had some conversations in various groups around the topic of the profile of a graduate. What do we look for in our graduates? The self-evaluation of the school committee, you all put in yourself as under leadership and governance, and so there's that. The visitor screening, specifically the Raptor screening for, for the schools as we enter. We have a lot of a discussion about this at leadership team and thought that this might not be the way to go with our demographics and so on, although there will be, it scares some people, thank you. There will be heightened, there will be very heightened and tight security in the new school that's being built. And the fourth one are the parking tags for staff. So they're not, and students, and students. They're, while they're not directly related to what I think is the core of this document, which is curriculum, instruction, and assessment, I, I do think, I feel responsible for not beginning the process at looking at the mission for the Marlboro Public Schools. And I know that you're all planning
Yeah, no, I think that's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the list of the names, what do the asterisks mean?
Co-chairs?
The chairs.
Co-chairs, sorry. The chairs, up at the top, membership and chairs asterisk. So, they're the chairs of, and some people are no longer, you know, here, but they were at the time we developed the document, so.
Can I just make a statement in line with the school committee's self-evaluation portion of it? Just a reminder that Summer Institute, MASC, here in Marlboro, June 20th and 21st, July, sorry, July, it's not political, but one of the sessions is on goal-setting for school committees. So, and I am planning to attend it, would love company, if anyone can break away, and it will be very timely, too, because it's the, you know, week or two prior to our powell. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but you got to register.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. Avidia Bank Charitable Foundation Pathways Program Extended School Year, $200.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. BioRidge Pharma EpiPens for Schools Program, EpiPen for all school buildings, $4,915.68.
Motion to approve.
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
To approve with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Whitcomb PTO, Whitcomb Programs, $1,759.56.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Middlesex DA, class of 2018 All Nighter, $500.
Motion to approve with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to approve with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Metro Health Foundation, MHS Transitions Program, $132,349.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to approve with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Reports of subcommittees? Any reports of subcommittees? Seeing none, members forum. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. Relative to the discussion earlier about some of the changes or potential changes going on around art foundations, or the media arts, or whatever, can we get an understanding, maybe, you know, in August, about how that's affecting the program of studies? Just because it sounds like it's kind of changed a little bit, and it just would be helpful to understand, so.
I can ask Dan to come back, and maybe not August, but maybe in September, at one of our first meetings, and we can talk about the changes and any structure to that.
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great. All right.
Can we, can we get an update, maybe, over the summer about, like, enrollment to the elementary levels? Like, I think we got that last summer, just to be curious to see, we haven't had that in a while, or at least for when we meet in August.
Yep, I'll be happy to send one-way information over the summer, so you can see what the enrollment looks like for all of our elementary classrooms, so that way, you know, you can see what we're doing. We're working right now with the elementary principals. There's one position that we're flexing in between two buildings, because we don't know where the enrollment's going to go, but we're holding one position to see where we're going to put it for next year. So, thank you, we will send that out.
Any other questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Well, actually, it's more of a statement, because, you know, we have to actually acknowledge that we have someone who's going to be leaving our midst, but has been here and made a huge impact on the whole community. Oh, you can shake your head, but we will get ourselves in trouble, because you do need an acknowledgement, and whether it's be from us or others.
Going to kill you.
I love that one. Good one. Where'd you get these pictures?
Oh, Steve. Steve.
That's a good one.
Oh, Puddy.
Did you say Puddy?
Yes. Where'd you get these pictures?
Meat sweats.
Oh, the meat sweats. Oh, too funny.
Oh, Paris.
Hey, look at you down at the cave.
No, we're always, we're always taking them.
Oh, that's great.
Our fingers. And yes, that is Maureen.
I was playing Deb Roy at her party. Oh, my God, a riot. Oh. That's, there's a long story behind that one.
What's Judy?
That's, oh.
Go left.
I.
Don't fall out on the balcony in my fall.
Oh, boat aboard.
Scary show. [laughing] 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 Got past these two.
No bomber.
Oh, boy, yep. Hmm, thank you. Who did that? That was very nice. That was very nice. Where did you get those pictures?
I remembered that. [laughing]
Wherever did you get? May I have a copy of that?
Of course.
To watch and?
Of course.
Thank you. Shut those off.
I just, I just wanted to say, the last, last superintendent we had, we never saw her in June.
[laughing]
And we knew when we hired Maureen, that wasn't going to be the case.
I told you that.
She was going to stay up until the last minute of June 30th, and then she'd be available if we have any questions or concerns for us, the superintendent, or any other people she brought into the district. So, thank you very much for what you've done for the city of Marlboro.
Thank you. Pleasure.
So, are you going to be in the same time zone or not? I know Indiana does things differently.
Yeah, they do too.
We have the same natural habitat, same animals.
A lot of cows.
A lot of cows.
Not as many as New Hampshire, but we do have corn. Yes, I'm in the same time zone.
She's going to be in the same time zone as Steve Delott.
[laughing]
Maureen.
Any other members? Any other members? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the decorations, and for this evening. It was a lot of fun, pink armbands. Thank you. It's been a pleasure, all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Contain a motion?
To adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries.
That was nice.
Thank you all very much.
What?